Does he have a placard?
No, where is it? I can put it.
Are we going to formally introduce him as part of our agenda today?
I was gonna put him as an update, but it's right here.
Okay.
Oh, that one right there, and that's Brody. So.
I don't think. Well, Chris still may show up.
Okay.
All right, I guess I'll slide over there just in case. I'm all plugged in and everything.
Do what?
You can tell the old timers versus the new timers.
Why?
I find if you get it, there you go. You're the old timer.
I am. This is in February, it'll be seven years.
The new timer, I got the fatter font. So did Jason.
Wanted by Jeremy to come on up.
Please, Jeremy, join us.
Welcome to the party.
We'll introduce some commissioners in a minute.
Okay.
Nothing like getting to go here first week.
Yeah, no kidding.
You're ready whenever.
All right, we're gonna call the August thirteenth, twenty twenty-three Planning Commission meeting to order. Twenty twenty-four, it says twenty twenty-three. I'm just reading the text. We're a year behind. August thirteenth, twenty twenty-four. We'll begin our meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. Looks like we've got Cambria Holbert is going to lead us in the pledge. What troop are you from?
Five forty-three.
Five forty-three, that's.
Not nine hundred.
Everybody stand for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I should say, thank you very much, appreciate that. I guess first order to excuse Ryan Kelly, Commissioner Kelly. Apparently, he's out of town, so we will proceed in his absence. Moving on to agenda item number one, Declaration of Conflicts. Do any of the commissioners have any conflicts with the issues being discussed today? There's no administrative items, so.
No, no conflicts, nope.
Nope.
Okay. All right, we'll move on to agenda item number two, Approval of the July ninth, twenty twenty-four Regular Meeting Minutes. Do I have a motion for approval?
I'll make a motion to approve the July ninth, twenty twenty-four Regular Meeting Minutes.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. All right, agenda item number three, Legislative Item. Public hearing to consider amendments to Title X zoning regulations, amending CH six, establishment of zoning districts, CH twenty, airport overlay, and CH thirty-one definitions. Turn the floor over to Steve.
It's a me show today.
It is.
As mentioned, this is to, wow, I must have brought the wrong.
Wrong year, wrong slide.
I'm O for two now. Give me a minute.
Van Halen.
Too many files, isn't there?
We got three notes here. No more public defender cases. Okay. That means nine, ten, twenty-four. Send them to Ogden? Send them to Ogden or we can do any or what? Discontinuum for a week.
Okay, as mentioned, this is to amend the zoning code, Chapter six, Chapter twenty, and Chapter thirty-one. I believe it was two thousand twenty-three, and the state legislation that required, in House Bill two oh six, required that every city that's within five thousand feet of an airport to have a airport overlay zone. It's also compatibility zone, but we're, I shouldn't say a little different. We're already built up right next to the airport, so to say compatibility zone, it's like what uses should be there, what shouldn't be there. We got a lot of non-conformities, so we didn't really put in the compatibility use type stuff. We just talked mostly about non-conformities, you know, expansions of those and what you can and can't do and within the zones. Because I'm not gonna go say, hey, all those homes in Herefordshire need to go away, or all those homes and businesses, you know, next to it. So, we're just gonna do an overlay zone, and then as people try to expand or increase the size of their homes, we'll take a better look at it and make sure that we're still meeting the FAA for height restrictions and stuff. So, when we, sorry, it's small on your guys' end, but it is in the packet online. What staff did is we looked at other cities that, one, don't have an airport in their city, but are adjacent to. So like Woods Cross has an airport, so North Salt Lake, West Bountiful don't. So I looked at those type of cities, Kearns has one, but cities don't. And how did they address those overlay zones of existing airports and how they encroach upon them? As most attorneys and planners, we don't reinvent the will. We will borrow and plagiarize. So all those people in school says, you know, don't plagiarize, guess what, you do that when you're an adult anyway. So we took something that's already existing, that was already, you know, reviewed by legal staff. Our staff also looked at it to make sure we were in accordance with what we're trying to do with what the state statutes are requiring. So that's what this code is kind of looking at. Chapter twenty will be a new chapter within our zoning code. Right now, it's just a blank chapter that's reserved, so we'll introduce it there. And then just to introduce a new overlay zone in Chapter six, and then definitions that we don't already have in Chapter thirty-one. So staff would recommend approval of the ordinance as written.
Okay.
Any questions?
Okay. So, going to public here?
Yep.
All right, do we have a motion to open the floor for public hearing?
So moved.
All right, I have a motion. Have a second. Second, the floor is now open for public comment.
We're seconded?
Oh.
Okay. Floor is now open for public comment. If anybody has any comments regarding this particular item, you're welcome to step forward. Keep your comments brief and concise, and we don't really need to issue a time limit, I don't think, because we're not really that full tonight. So if you'd like, please step forward, and we'd be happy to hear from you. Okay.
Seeing there is none?
Seeing there is none, do we have a motion to close the public hearing on this?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
We have a motion to close. Do we have a second? We have a second. Public hearing is now closed. All right, this is a legislative item, so it's a roll call vote.
I need a motion to approve or deny or table or modify or.
Okay, do we have a motion to approve, deny, or table?
I make a motion that we amend Title X zoning regulations, amending Chapter six, establishing of zoning district, Chapter twenty overlay, airport overlay, and Chapter thirty-one definitions stated in the minutes.
Second that motion.
We have a motion and a second.
Roll call.
Yep, roll call, Steve.
Yep. Okay, Commissioner Holbert.
Uh, yay, to pass.
Yes.
I suppose, yes.
Commissioner Felth.
Yay.
Commissioner Bills.
Yes.
Commissioner Brand.
Yes.
Commissioner Tanner.
Aye.
Commissioner Thompson.
Yes.
All right, the motion passes. Unanimously? Okay, if there's nothing else on that particular item, let's go on to agenda item number four. Legislative item to consider amendments to Title X zoning regulations, amending CH six, establishment of zoning districts, amending Chapter ten, Table ten-two, table of required lots and setback requirements for non-residential zoning districts for primary building, amending Chapter thirteen, mixed use. Amending Chapter seventeen, table of uses. Table seventeen-two, allowed uses for non-residential zones, that was a mouthful.
Was a mouthful.
All right, Steve, back to you.
We have, this has been a discussion item for several meetings, looking at what the general plan had called out to be a commercial mixed use for most of the commercial properties. Most of them are on thirty-five-hundred West or Midland. There are two, couple islands on nineteen that this would also involve. Last time we talked, it was more of what is that distance from back of curb to where just townhomes could begin, or just residential could begin? So, staff kind of took a look at existing buildings along that corridor. Buildings range, you know, seventy-three, sixty-two, a hundred and eight feet, a hundred and three, eighty-three. There was one that's a hundred and seventy-six, that's Joanne's fabric store there in Clinton. I didn't look at Walmart, because we're not gonna have a big store like that in any of these properties. So the average was about ninety feet in depth. So, staff changed it from the one hundred that we showed last time to one hundred and twenty-five from back of curb, so that gives you a fifteen-foot setback, the building plus some parking before any residential can begin. Again, if I was a developer and I wanted a hundred and thirty-eight foot deep of commercial, you know, that just pushes that back a little bit more, but that's my choice. I just can't put it anywhere closer than. That way, it's still along those main roads, commercial businesses are required, and then, you know, one hundred percent residential beyond after that, a hundred and twenty-five feet. Feel that that would help developing those areas, mostly commercial, but, you know, and some of them, especially the deeper ones, would have the ability to be more residential in the back there where it's similar to downtown, but not exactly, where downtown requires every building to have commercial on the main floor. This one would just be the one building fronting the street. And then the other levels above or behind a hundred and twenty-five could be residential. Or, again, that one building could be all office, and buildings behind there could be all office. Wouldn't want to limit anything if they wanted to do more and more commercial, but still have that ability to do townhomes or something back there. So that was the only big change from what we talked about last meeting, last July. So, stuff that needs to be amended, Chapter six, just removing community commercial. I picked the name, you guys didn't really give me one, so I just called it urban corridor, because really, it's just a corridor road, and just call it an urban. I can tell you off record why I picked that, but I won't tell you on record. Chapter ten, removing again setbacks and landscaping requirements for community commercial. Chapter thirteen, which is the mixed use, just adding in that new zone. I'll put the name in there when it goes to council, if you guys are liking the name. And then, architecturally and material-wise, we reincorporated what the original new mixed-use code had for, it had a secondary type of materials that could be used, which is more of the traditional brick and stone and rock and stuff, so. When the council looked at the mixed-use code, they got rid of that secondary one and made it more just aerospace design. So this is reintroducing it, so on the west side, it's gonna be different than what's on the east side. Material-wise, so correlated more with what's going on in Clinton, Syracuse, and then also West Haven above, so it doesn't. Also, we have these metal flying buildings on the west side, where we want it more up here, contributing to what LR four space has around, so. That's kind of a new portion, again, it's just those particular materials, which is typical right now in the community commercial zone. It does allow for a little bit of metal, but again, it's only twenty percent, not the whole building, where downtown allows for eighty percent of the building to be metal, and so it's kind of a switch, introduces a new material that community commercial doesn't allow at the moment. And then in Chapter seventeen, it's just taking away that column of community commercial, because it's no longer be, you're not gonna look at Chapter seventeen for uses, it'll be part of Chapter thirteen. So, staff would recommend forwarding a recommendation to the council to approve.
Okay, thank you, Steve. Do we have a motion to open the floor for public comment?
So moved.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Second, okay, the floor is now open for public comment. If there's anybody here that wishes to make, okay. State your name and address, if you don't mind.
Bob Barnes, three eighteen West, forty-six twenty North in Provo. I had a couple of questions, this, Steve mentioned the setback from, I think you had mentioned Midland and thirty-five-hundred and nineteenth, were those the streets?
Portions of nineteenth.
Portions of nineteenth. But I noticed in the, I think it's page eleven here of the, under section eight, row buildings, there's a note, footnote of twenty-foot setback from four thousand south. So our question is specifically around four thousand south. Largely a residential street. And so, how would this, would this be a hundred and twenty-five foot setback from four thousand? Or is this off of only a property that would border or front, you know, Midland, for example?
Okay, Steve, we'll write down your comment, we'll address them all together. Is that your only question and comment?
Um, well, I have some conditional questions.
Go ahead. Answer from now, because the audience is pretty sparse.
If you'd like.
That particular note deals more with the business park, because if you look in in the business park column, it has note number seven. We didn't follow that into the new zone.
Okay. And are you under, you're under row buildings then?
So row buildings would be caveat number nine.
Okay.
So the business park does allow them on four thousand, but anything on nineteen is not.
Okay. So what would the setback be on the new zone for a row building off of four thousand?
Well, all buildings that front the street would have to have that commercial component, and the setback is zero to fifteen. And then, the row homes could be, could start, it'd be one hundred percent, a hundred and twenty-five feet back of curb.
Okay. So it would have to be commercial in the front?
Yeah.
Okay.
I don't think we're gonna get council to buy off that this zone could be a hundred percent residential.
Yeah, I think, looking through the other areas, it's, I think it makes sense in all those other areas, but on nineteenth, it's kind of a, it's pretty much residential, residential, you know, and then everything that borders, everything that borders Midland is obviously commercial that fronts Midland, but four thousand, with the exception of, you know, one kind of dental office, I think, is all residential. So, that's, our question is really pertaining to two parcels that are just, just east of the, that seven-eleven and the Taco Bell that's just come in. And those properties sit right in between that Taco Bell and then a row of single-family homes. And so, you know, we have questions around, you know, putting some row homes or whatever in between that residential, single-family, and the Taco Bell versus putting, fronting that with a couple of commercial properties, and how would you make that fit, you know, with those townhomes, so. Anyway, that's, I think, the sum of all of our questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Okay. Again, thank you for your comments. Do we have a motion to close a public hearing?
I'll make a motion to close the hearing.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Public comments are now closed. Have a vote.
Now, as he's mentioned, there are a few odd properties that, you know, front on four thousand that are currently zoned community commercial, that have single-family homes. There's a few here and there on nineteen-hundred West that are single-family homes that are zoned commercial, so those little oddity-type things, but as mentioned, I don't think we're gonna get the council to buy off on removing commercial and having one hundred percent residential. Doesn't mean they won't, I just, in the past, have, you know, seen it a bigger fight than I think it was worth, and you know, across the street on four thousand there, where those townhomes are in the back that are almost a thousand feet, you know, from the street. That was a three-two vote, and the mayor had to break that vote in order for that to occur. It was a, you know, a big debate and big issue. Even the last one I know, one before that that changed from community commercial to R three was U dot closed thirty-five-hundred West north of four thousand, or forty-eight-hundred South. And it was still a three-two vote to change it to multifamily from commercial, even though there's really no commercial access to that property, you know, it was still a big fight. The council's just had a hard time changing, getting rid of commercial for multifamily, so. I think this is a good compromise, where we have some commercial and then residential and back. But, doesn't mean the council couldn't see it a different way. It is a slightly different council than it was a few years ago.
And, is it okay if I ask a question?
Sure.
So that location that he's referring to, are those two, it currently has a home on each plot, and it's right next to the Taco Bell, and so it's just, is that the only, is that where the community commercial ends? I can't.
Yeah, just east of those two homes is a single family.
Okay. But that's the last line, like it doesn't bleed into any more of the neighborhood, okay.
Till you get farther east on four thousand, when you get, what, east of North Park Elementary, then it turns into business park where commercial exists, again. Excluding the frontrunner station area, which will have commercial as well.
Eventually, yeah.
On four thousand.
Yeah, and so that's my thought about that, is that thinking to the future, that road will be quite a bit of commercial in the future.
It'll sneak in commercial, go residential, have some more commercial, and then residential, and then go back to commercial.
Yeah.
So it will be kind of an oddity in the road, but it's, it terminates two large roads, so.
Any other questions? Okay. So, it's a vote to make a recommendation to commission? To table it? Prove a recommendation or deny it, right? Is that how?
Yeah, we can forward our recommendation onto the council.
Okay. Do we have a motion to?
Yes, make a motion to forward a recommendation to the city council to prove the proposed amendments to Title X zoning regulations, amending Chapter six, establishing of zoning districts, amending Chapter ten, Table ten-two, table of required lots and setback requirements for non-residential zoning districts for primary buildings, amending Chapter thirteen, mixed use, amending Chapter seventeen, table of uses, Table seventeen-two, allowing allowed uses, non-residential zones.
Okay, we have a motion.
I got it all covered, right?
I think you do.
Holy cow.
Motion to make a recommendation to council. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second. Okay, Steve, roll call vote.
Commissioner Tanner.
Aye.
Commissioner Thompson.
Aye.
Commissioner Bills.
Aye.
Commissioner Brand.
Aye.
Commissioner Felth.
Aye.
Commissioner Holbert.
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay. All right, agenda item number five, Commissioners Minute. Does anyone have questions, thoughts, or comments?
Other than introducing Jeremy Thompson, who's our newest member, he filled in.
His name tag's not in the right spot.
I wasn't gonna forget him, you guys.
His name tag's not in the right place.
He's filling in for Jason Spar's spot that was left open. He came recommended by the mayor, was approved by the council not too long ago, so he will serve as an alternate right now, but as Janelle understands and Dan, that you kind of are in the learning process of that first part, and rather than being thrown to the wolves like the other three here, that was, all of a sudden, you jumped in and you were voting and making recommendations and arguing with people, they get a little bit time to kind of watch, generally. I mean, Jeremy's first meeting is, he's thrown into the meeting, so I'll let him introduce himself and kind of a little bit about him, and.
Sure, yeah, Jeremy Thompson, I live down just on the other side of fifty-six hundred in Roy, and ran for city council two last year. Feels like it was so long ago now. It's a lot of work. Got to learn a whole lot about the city, talked to the mayor. And I've spent twenty-one years in the Air Force, so I, my life is kind of about service. My dad, before that, was in the Navy, and we moved around with him, and I got out and retired and decided I had way too much free time. So, I wanted to keep the service going, obviously didn't win the election. It was a really good learning experience, but he said, hey, you know, there's a position opening up on the Planning Committee, and you're gonna learn a whole lot more about the city. And I said, that sounds like something to do. So, I was gonna say, great, but we'll see.
He's watched a lot of videos, read a lot of things.
Yeah.
Just came another book to read, he's.
Yeah, so, looking, you know, they don't teach this kind of stuff in school. Like, even when I paid attention, you know, we still had civics and citizenship class in school, and they don't tell you about the Planning Commission does this, and the City Council does that, and it's all unique to every city, and I've lived in a lot of cities in America, and everyone's different in their own way, so I'm really excited to learn about this one some more and continue doing service to the city.
Great. Well, look forward to having you on board.
Thanks.
Look forward to having your experience and your voice, so, welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Questions or?
Just a reminder that Day of Service for Roy's coming up, so.
I can barely hear you.
The end of August, I know the microphone, I heard it earlier, I don't know what's going on.
Get a little closer, maybe.
I don't know, normally.
There you go.
It just was too tall for me. Yeah, so Day of Service in Roy, just a reminder to tell your friends and groups, any group you're part of, because they'll.
When is that again?
They can still sign up, I wanna say it's the twenty-fourth, yeah.
Of?
August, sorry.
Okay.
So coming up.
Do we know what the projects are?
Usually, they're just all over the city, like, they clean up the trails. Last year, our scout troop helped to do Roy West Park, they did some cleanup of some of that area, and.
So there's, I saw three at church, so there was three flyers, one was a trail cleanup. I don't remember the other one, and the one that I saw, because I'd lived near it, was cleanup Emma Russell, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, so they're usually just all over the city, and whatever you, if you sign up with a group, they assign the group, but if you're just by yourself, I think they'll just assign you to a group, so. Anyway, but yeah, so, tell your friends and neighbors, if they haven't already got on board, to get on board. And they get to go swim at the Aquatic Center after it is.
Ooh.
Yep.
Last day. Donuts and chocolate in the morning.
It was the last day they're open.
They did it earlier this year, though, but.
Why is it not sending you to the new complex?
Oh, yeah, we went and saw that, too. Oh, yeah, that's open, it's open.
Is it?
Yeah. It looks nice.
So go look at it.
Terrific.
Did you get a free T-shirt? Ah, no. Wonder if they have anymore, I'm gonna go ask. They had water bottles when we were there. Oh, they send nothing, free T-shirts, I'm gonna go see if they have any. But it looks, it looks a lot nicer. Beautiful. And I look forward to hopefully motivating myself to go use it. I thought you were gonna say have Planning Commission meeting one night at the complex. Oh, no. I'm kidding, Steve.
What a look.
It'd be fun, we could go live from there. We could have a work session there.
Thanks, Janelle. Anybody else? Okay, then we'll move on to the next agenda item, the staff update, Steve.
I really don't have any updates, I mean, a lot of the projects that we've approved lately are just about ending. The one on Hinckley in nineteen, I think they're just installing landscaping, and I think they've got people moved in already. The one on forty-three-hundred-and-fifty-six, they've got people moving in already. So, we're just waiting for a new barrage of projects to start being built.
Anything on the horizon?
Uh, we do.
Without specifics, but...
Well, I mean, we talked about a couple of them before, one, uh, Roy Flex place up by Weineger's. They're just re, redoing their plans and will resubmit. Um, the one, the old um, Chinese gourmet place there over here by Harman's, they're finalizing their plans, so.
That's great.
We're hoping for, you know, a couple of commercial buildings to be started here soon too.
And a dilly-dally spot, still just trying to get things worked out.
Yeah, I think a lot of it is, you know, the interest rates are high and cost are high and so.
We talked several meetings ago about looking at the animal keeping or the animal...
Uh, we'll talk about that here in the month, in the, in the work session.
Okay. Perfect.
So that's another question, are we having a work session next month and the next month, or do you?
We'll have one in August.
Okay.
Um, we'll see how, where it goes, we might have one in September. Well, I wanna get through the animal, uh, chickens and stuff, the, kinda the high and low end of how we wanna approach that, cause I know we had two applicants looking at that, so we wanna get them going as, and other than that, I don't think we have a lot to talk about it at, at the moment. Um, next year we will have several work sessions, cause we have to start looking at the water element in the general plan. It's due by December of next year. Uh, we do have Wasatch Front Regional Council helping us write that, so I don't have to do it, which is great. So.
And are there any specific trainings this fall that we're supposed to?
Uh, we'll get with um, our attorney, Mr. P Tan, um, and we'll go over the Opens Meeting Act and then kind of just little trainings, things here and there on other aspects.
Know if there was another conference type thing?
APA conference coming up soon?
Uh, the next one's in, in Provo.
Oh.
Oh boy.
And so it's a little too far away for, and I don't have a big enough budget to send you guys for hotels, so. Yeah, Provo sounds great.
I mean, it's drivable at least.
You'll still go, won't you?
I'll still go. Yeah, I mean, if you wanted to, you could take frontrunner.
Yeah.
You can help pay for, that stuff, it's just staying there, I don't have that big of a budget.
I was gonna say, when it's that close, I wouldn't stay there anyway, but...
Do they have a conference fee?
To the what?
Is there a conference fee to get into it or?
Yeah.
Do they, so?
That would...
Would the city be able to handle that if we go to the transportation?
Planning commissioners, if there's three, it's a lot cheaper. So.
Great conference.
I can send you the stuff if you're interested, I just wouldn't be able to...
Yeah, if you could.
To house you.
I just, yeah, I enjoyed it last year, I think I learned quite a bit, and I was lucky that it was in Ogden, cause then I learned quite a bit about our area.
Yeah.
So, um, I mean, if it fits in people's schedules, it could be a good...
I'll send the information, if you're interested, let me know.
Okay.
So, that's all I've got.
Again, we appreciate the public for being here and, and sharing their comments. Uh, now we're, uh, item seven, a motion to adjourn, do we have a motion?
Motion to adjourn.
We have a motion, we have a second.
I can't.
You're not fast enough, Jeremy.
We have a second.
I'm the Chris of the thing this time.
All in favor?
Aye.
I don't think we have any nays, so.
Chris is not here.
Meeting adjourned. Yeah, just for the fun of it.
Just for the fun of it, he does, yeah.
Good job, dude.
Thank you.